December thirteenth, twenty twenty one, meeting of the Oregon City Planning Commission. Before we begin, I'd like to do a roll call to see which commissioners are here in no particular order. Commissioner Mike Mitchell?
Here.
Commissioner Chris Staggs?
Yep, I'm here.
Commissioner Greg Stoll?
Here.
Commissioner Daphne West?
Here.
Commissioner Patty Gage?
Here.
And Commissioner Dirk Schlangenhoffer, I am here. Okay, before we begin, because it may be a long night, I wanted to give Kelly a chance to introduce someone new. Ms. Kelly Reed?
Sure. Thank you, Dirk Schlangenhoffer. I would like to introduce our new interim community development director, Aquila Hurd Ravitch.
Kelly, can you hear you?
Hmm.
Might be your mask.
Good. Is this better? All right, sorry about that. Yes, we have our new interim community development director here, Aquila Hurd Ravitch.
Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me all right? Is that better?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, I have to project sometimes. Yes, Aquila Hurd Ravitch, and I'm the interim community development director. This is the beginning of my third week, and I come to you from Two Allerton. I was there for about thirteen years, and I took a little break in between, and so I'm happy to be here and getting the opportunity to work with all of you. And I would also like to introduce one more new person who is on Zoom, and that is Teresa Montalvo. And Teresa, there she is. So Teresa is our planning manager. Today was her first day, and so I thought I'd let her not come to the meeting, but she's gonna watch it, and you'll get to meet her in person soon. So Teresa, would you like to say hello?
Sure, thanks, Aquila. Yeah, Teresa Montalvo. Again, you heard, this is my first day, but I'm really excited to be here. I come to you from the city of Portland. I was previously the land use supervisor there for the Bureau of Transportation, and I'm real happy to be here and look forward to working with you all.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. A pleasure to meet you both. I know we're gonna have a lot of fun times here together. Okay, so let's begin. Before we begin, are there any public comments on items not on the agenda? Okay, does not seem like it. All right, we've got two items on the agenda. We have two public hearings. The first one is a Gardner-- I'm gonna have to look at the-- it wasn't printed on my agenda. I still don't have a title. Okay, I'm gonna call it the Gardner Middle School sign variance. It is GLUA-21-00062 and VAR-21-00006, sign variance for Gardner Middle School. All right, it is a quasi judicial hearing, so I'm going to begin with the quasi judicial script. Two public hearings on land use applications are scheduled tonight. Our role is to conduct the public hearing and to make decisions about the matter before us. In making those decisions, we must apply the applicable codes and laws and cannot vary from or change those laws or codes. Members of the planning commission are to be unbiased. Before the start of the hearing, I will ask the planning commissioners whether they have any potential conflicts such as family, financial, or business relationships with any of the applicants or with regard to the land in question. I will also ask whether any of the planning commissioners have discussed the application in question with any of the parties or have independent knowledge of relevant facts, such as from a visit to the site in question. Any member of the audience may question any planning commissioner about their disclosures. A staff report has been prepared for each application and has been made available to the public seven days before the first public hearing. The staff report identifies the approval criteria that apply to each applicant's proposal. Staff has analyzed the criteria which are contained in the staff report. The quasi judicial hearing procedure that the planning commission will follow is set out in state law and Oregon City Municipal Code. The hearing procedure steps are shown on the planning commission website and not on that door. Public testimony will be called on order. It was requested in advance of the meeting. If you have not, email citystaff@planning@orcity.org to request to speak and would like to testify. Please raise your virtual or physical hand here when I ask if there are others in the audience who would like to participate. For the public record, please begin all testimony stating your name and city of residence. We don't need the complete address, just your city of residence. However, if you would like to receive a copy of the notice of decision, please state your mailing address or email address. Testimony and evidence should be directed towards the applicable approval criteria. If you believe other criteria apply in addition to those addressed in the staff report, identify and discuss those criteria and explain how and why you believe they apply to the application under consideration. Any person may submit written material while the public record is open on each application. Any written materials received by the city staff during the time period in which the record is open will be placed in the record. Written materials submitted during the public hearing must be presented to the city staff in order to become part of the record. If a person intends for PowerPoint presentations, reports, pictures, or other exhibits used in their oral testimony to be placed in the record, copies must be submitted to city staff while the record is open. If they are not given to staff, they will not be included in the record. Any person wishing a continuance to present additional evidence and testimony or to keep the record open to respond to new evidence must make that request before the public testimony portion of the hearing is closed. If the planning commission makes a decision with which you disagree, any issue that you may wish to appeal must have been raised on the record for the consideration of city commission or Luba or both. Without raising the issue on the record with sufficient detail and accompanied by statements or evidence that the city and all parties can respond to the issue will not be deemed appealable to the city commission or state land use board of appeals. In addition, the failure of an applicant to raise constitutional or other issues related to proposed conditions of approval with sufficient detail to allow the local government or its designee to respond to the issue precludes an action for damages in circuit court. We will now open-- the record's already open. We're gonna open the public hearing for file number-- file number GLUA-21-00062 and VAR-21-0006, sign variance Gardner Middle School. I'm gonna ask each planning commissioner if they have had any ex parte contacts, conflicts of interest, bias, or any other statements to declare or have visited this site. If there was a site visit, the planning commissioner must declare what he or she perceived. All right, we'll begin with Commissioner Mitchell.
No conflicts of interest, no ex parte contacts, no bias, and I did not visit the site.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Staggs?
I have not visited the site. I have no ex parte contact and no conflicts of interest.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Stoll?
No ex parte contact. I did not visit the site, no conflicts of interest.
Thank you. Commissioner West?
I have no bias, no ex parte contact, no conflict of interest. I did go visit the site, and I wanted specifically, I was looking to see where the building that had no windows was placed. And I saw that.
Okay. You saw the location?
Yes, I visited the site. I drove around. I drove around to see the whole school pattern of traffic.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Gage?
No conflict of interest, no ex parte contact, no bias, and I have not visited the site.
Okay, thank you. And for myself, I have no conflicts of interest, no ex parte contact, no bias. I planned to visit the site. It got dark. I didn't know how much I was gonna be able to see, so I ended up not seeing the site. Would anyone in the audience care to question any of the commissioners on their statements? Anybody online? I don't see anybody. Okay. All right, we will now commence with the planning staff report, and I believe this is Mrs. Christina Robinson Gardner.
Thank you, Chair Schlangenhoffer and planning commissioners. I have a brief PowerPoint presentation to go over the major issues this evening, and I know the applicant is here and also has a short presentation online as well. So as Commissioner Schlangenhoffer mentioned, this is a planning commission variance for a sign variance for a monument sign at Gardner Middle School. Your options this evening are standard. You can approve the proposal with the recommended conditions. You can approve the proposal with modified conditions and any revised findings. You can deny the proposal, or you can continue the hearing and request more information. This is, I mentioned, a planning commission review of a sign code variance. So this is zoned residential zone. It went through a conditional use review with the new construction of the Gardner Middle School. Excuse me. The proposal was to build a new middle school in the location of the existing tract and then tear down the older middle school and put the new tract in its area. That was reviewed by the planning commission and approved with conditions, and at that time, they just didn't have the level of detail needed for the small monument sign. Sign variances are reviewed through the conditional use process. So as I'll show you, they use Chapter fifteen point two eight sign code variance criteria. So even though it's run through the conditional use process and variances, it does review under the sign code criteria for variances. This is location of the site. It is at the new entrance at Williams Street, and I'm going to ask Lisa's help. If you could put your cursor over where the proposed sign is located. It's approximately, I don't know, about a hundred feet into the driveway into the Gardner Middle School on the left. It has-- its location is a little bit on the bias, so it is directing, as you see with the arrow, onto the extension of Williams, which is part of their new driveway. This shows a Google Street View prior to construction, but where you see the Williams Street signage on the ground as it goes into the grass field is about the location of the driveway entrance. Next slide. Oh, shoot, there you go. So as I mentioned, this is a monument sign. It's about five feet tall. It has some internally illuminated signage and some reader boards. So the reason that this is in front of you this evening is because in residential zones, internally illuminated signs are required review by the planning commission. And that is because it's a context sensitive situation. So in some situations, an internally illuminated, you know, fifteen foot big large sign may not be appropriate. In other cases, it may be. I mean, the high school is a perfect example of a larger internally illuminated sign. I mean, the high school is a perfect example of a larger internally illuminated sign. This is a much smaller monument sign with reader board style and internally illuminated lighting where the Thorby Gardner Middle School is. And in this situation, it's only five feet tall. Next slide. These are the grounds for the planning commission variance criteria. I can read them through. We have six grounds. That the variance for the requirement is not likely to cause substantial damage to the adjacent properties by reducing light air safe access or other desirable or necessary qualities otherwise protected by this title. That the request is the minimum variance that would alleviate the hardship. Granting the variance will equal or exceed the purpose of the regulation to be modified. Any impacts resulting from the adjustments are mitigated. No practical alternatives have been identified which would accomplish the same purpose and not require variance. And the variance conforms to the comprehensive plan and the intent of the ordinance being varied. Those are the criteria, and the response by the applicant and staff's analysis are found in the staff report. Staff has provided four conditions of approval this evening that I believe address those criteria. One, the applicant shall obtain all required sign and building permits for this application. And in that application, there is a review for clear vision angle and to ensure that it's structurally built. Two, the variance approval allows for the submitted sign to be erected. The approved sign may be replaced with a new sign in future through a Type 1 site plan and permit review, excuse me, as long as there is no increase in the electronic screen surface area, the height of the electronic screen, or change in general location. What this condition does is allows the school district, if they need to replace the reader board or slightly change the configuration of the sign in the future, they do not have to come back to the planning commission. We all know reader boards have a finite life, and I want to make sure the condition of approval identifies that the sign as approved can be rebuilt or reconfigured as long as it doesn't generally change its size as proposed in this application. Three, that the approved sign shall stay in compliance with all standards set forth in the city's adopted sign code that address flashing, moving, or animated elements and the number of messages changes allowed per day. That is currently three. This condition is tied to our code. If in the future, through different conversations, the sign code changes to allow five changes a day, whatever it is, as long as the school district is compliant with that section of our sign code, they are approved. And four, this is proposed by the applicant and accepted by staff. The hours of operation for the sign shall be 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. As indicated, these are the four options this evening. That is generally my staff report. I'm available for any questions. I know the applicant is here this evening, and they do have their own presentation.
Okay, does anybody have any questions for Ms. Gardner? Okay, Commissioner West.
Ms. Gardner, did I hear you say that it was approved for three messages and now they've upped it to five?
No, the sign code itself, Chapter 15.28, has a prohibited section that talks about flashing or moving, and the designation is no more than, reader board signs cannot change more than three times a day in our current code. And the purpose of that condition of approval is if for any reason our code section changes to be five times a day, then they will always, they're required to stay current with whatever our code section is. Rather, if we just put a condition that says you shall be three times a day, we don't want to be subject to today's code if it's changes. That's the reason for that condition of approval. Is number three is just to tie it to our section of our sign code that talks about flashing and moving signage.
So when I was reading the information, it was sounding like the reason for this electronic sign is so that they could change their messages multiple times a day. And with all the emergencies and who knows what's going to come up. So I guess I would like to ask that of the school district if three times a day is fair, but here we are doing a variance and maybe...
Well, it's the internally illuminated part that's the variance.
Pardon?
Internally illuminated and the reader board is the variance, not necessarily the three times a day. That's actually in our prohibited section, so they can't actually get a variance for that. They're just getting a variance for the internally illuminated part of our sign code.
Okay. Catch that. So then they have to do whatever the sign code says.
And if the sign code changes to allow more changes, then they can do that too as that happens over time.
Thank you.
Okay, and that brought up something, and something just popped into my head. If the code changes or if our ordinance does change, if we decide that the sign, the part of the sign that can have the illuminated portion, if we decide that needs to get smaller and we change code, would the sign no longer be lawful or would it be considered grandfathered in because it met code today?
Yeah, I mean, the purpose is you, if the planning commission approves this this evening, it is the size, and I'm going to go back and show it.
Because the illuminated, the part that changes isn't five feet tall, that the whole sign is, so how much of that sign can be digital and changing?
Well, internally illuminated is both reader board and the sign. So the sign letters are internally illuminated and the reader board itself is internally illuminated. So both things are part of the sign proposal this evening.
Okay. All right. But if our code changes, we couldn't say your sign no longer?
No, the only reason I put that, you are approving the sign. It'll stay. It'll be allowed. The section, as I know in years past, there is a large discussion about how many times a day a reader board can change. There was a decision in 2015 that said three. Five, 10 years from now, there may be a different number. I just wanted to make sure that the conditions of approval just referred back to our code.
Okay. All right, any other questions? Okay. All right, then the applicant has a presentation? Okay.
Wes Rogers is here, and he'll introduce his consultant team. He's with the applicant.
Okay, then we'll hear from Mr. Wes Rogers, and you have 15 minutes if you need it. And please state your name and city of residence. Thank you.
Wes Rogers, Director of Capital Projects for Oregon City School District. I live here in the city of Oregon City. Just here to introduce our comments about this sign variance and just state that we're very supportive of the staff's recommendation and feel that the angle of the sign along with the height of the sign and the restricted viewing hours of 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m., which are agreeable to the district, we fully support and really feel that the sign's going to make a great entry for the school as you approach on Williams Street, and we're here to answer any questions for you tonight. First, though, we have our consultant Mercedes Sarah with 3J Consulting here tonight. She's going to do a quick PowerPoint presentation for you, and she's on Zoom.
Yeah, I'm here on Zoom. So I will share my screen if I have that capability and get started on this PowerPoint presentation. So good evening. My name is Mercedes Sarah. I'm a senior planner with 3J Consulting. My city of residence is Milwaukee, Oregon. We'd like to thank staff for their staff report and presentation. The Oregon City School District is proposing an electronic message board sign at Gardner Middle School. The school is located in a residential zone, and as planning staff noted, in residential zones, electronic message board signs are required to seek a land use variance application. The red arrow here indicates the proposed location of the sign. The proposed sign will be a monument style sign. The sign will include backlit letters, which are allowed within the sign code. The internally lit electronic message portion of the sign will be located on one side. A total sign face area is 25.5 square feet, which does not exceed the display area allowed by the city, and the proposed operational hours of the sign will be between 7:00 a.m. and 9:00 p.m. The sign will be located on Williams Street between Leonard Street and the main entrance to the school site. The sign is located back away from nearby residential properties and has been angled away from those adjacent residential homes. The lighting levels on the sign will have relatively minimal impact compared to the ambient lighting in the area. The LED lights will be directed out and down to reduce upward illumination. The illumination from the messages will be well below the allowed 0.5-foot candle maximum at the abutting property line. There is a specific set of variance criteria that only apply to signs. Christina touched on these in the Oregon City Municipal Code found in Section 1528-130A. I'll briefly go over each of the six variance criteria. Criteria one ensures that the variance will not likely cause substantial damage to adjacent properties. The applicant proposes a sign mid-block to not conflict with traffic control signs or devices. The sign is positioned at a 135-degree angle away from nearby properties to avoid lights spilling onto adjacent properties. The illumination is specifically designed for LEDs to travel out and down. A lighting plan showing lighting foot candles was provided, and as you can see here, no lighting impacts to the neighboring properties will be had by the sign. The foot candle levels at the adjacent property are zero. Lastly, as mitigation, the sign will be shut off during night hours to reduce the impact on residential properties. Criteria two requires that the request is the minimum that would alleviate the hardship. The intention of the electronic message board signs is to allow quick and easy access to important school and community information. They turn monument signs into versatile communication tools that can rotate through various messages, often in more than one language. There is a limit to the capacity of static signs creating issues for schools and determining which activities get posted and which get left out, resulting in inequities. In response to criteria three, the intent of the standard being modified is to ensure that electronic signs do not shine onto neighboring structures. As mentioned before, the sign is located in angles that no neighboring structures are impacted and that the sign technology is made to mitigate light spillage beyond short distances. Variance four criteria ensures that impacts resulting from the adjustment are mitigated. The mitigation measures were mentioned above for criteria one. Variance criteria five ensures that no practical alternatives exist that would accomplish the same purpose and not require variance. As mentioned somewhat in response to variance criteria two, no practical alternatives exist that are versatile as the electronic message board signs. There are limitations on space on static signs and issues concerning equity and added labor costs of changing static signs out when necessary and an overall inability to provide a variety of information seamlessly. Finally, criteria six concerns performance with the comprehensive plan and intent of the ordinance being varied. The intent of the standard is to ensure that the sign does not shine directly onto neighboring structures, which for reasons already explained is mitigated in various ways. On the right is a goal from the comprehensive plan that contains directly to the sign variance request. Schools are active places with many events happening during any given week. Schools are gathering places, and oftentimes, these events concern the whole community and not just students, faculty, and parents. Providing these electronic message board signs and little static signs will help to prevent barriers in developing, in the development of Gardner Middle School and serve the needs of the Oregon City residents. We thank you for your time this evening, and we are happy to answer any questions you have.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any questions for the applicant?
I have a question.
Okay, go ahead.
Can the applicant give us an approximate cost of the sign?
Oh, I'm going to ask that Wes answer this one.
I am not, I do not know specifically how much the sign costs.
Commissioner Staggs, would you like to add anything else to that question?
No, it's okay. It was, I was curious what the total sign cost was just for reference.
Okay. All right, thank you. Other questions?
No.
Okay. All right. Is there anyone here from Neighborhood Association? Any public comment? Do we have any comments? Nothing? Okay. All right. And we will close the public record for GLUA-21-00062 and VAR-21-0006, sign variance for Gardner Middle School. All right.
Commissioner Schlegenhoffer, can I correct one comment I made in my applicant's question?
Absolutely.
There was a question about the Thorby Gardner sign, if it was internally illuminated. I was correct. I, for some reason, forgot. It's back, oh, sorry. There was a question if the Thorby Gardner sign was internally illuminated, the lettering, and I was incorrect. For some reason, I forgot. It's backlit, which actually is allowed by our code. It's one of those things where they're the cut letters and they're backlit from behind, which is allowed by our code. It's not internally, it's just the reader board, which the applicant is here for this evening. So I wanted to correct that incorrect information that I gave in my presentation.
Okay, thank you. Okay, do we have any other questions for staff or the applicant or would we like to discuss this or would like someone would like to make a motion? Okay, go ahead.
I would like to approve or make a motion to approve GLUA-21-00062 and with the variance -21-0006 with the conditions of approval as written by staff.
Second. Okay, we have a, we have a motion by Commissioner West and a second by Commissioner Mitchell. Call roll, please.
Sure. Commissioner Gage?
Aye.
Commissioner West?
Aye.
Commissioner Stoll?
Aye.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Aye.
Commissioner Staggs?
Aye.
Chair Schlegenhoffer?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, thank you. Okay, moving on. Agenda item number two, general land use application 21-00029, series farm plan unit development, MAS 21-00003, master plan, plan unit development, MAS 21-00004, detailed development plan, phase one, MAS 21-00005, detailed development plan, phase two, SUB 21-00001, subdivision 123 lots, GEO 21-00010, geologic hazard review, and ENROD 21-00006, natural resources overlay district. Have we had any new participants since our first land use item?
I don't believe so. I don't believe so.
Okay, thank you. Then we can go straight to it and we can hear from...
Sorry, you need to do the conflict of interest?
Yes.
Sorry.
Thank you, okay. We're not going to do the, we're not going to do the script, but we do need to ask if we have any ex parte, sorry, let me start over. I'm going to ask every planning commissioner if they have had any ex parte contacts, conflicts of interest, bias, any other statement to declare or have visited the site. And I'm going to change it up a little bit. Commissioner Gage?
I have no conflict of interest, no bias, no ex parte contact, and I have not visited the site.
Thank you. Commissioner West?
I have no bias, no ex parte contact, no conflict of interest. I have not visited the site. I have purchased property from Mr. Handris, and he had contributed to my campaign for city commission in 2015.
Okay. Write that down. Okay, Commissioner Mitchell?
No bias, no ex parte conflict, ex parte contact, no conflict of interest. I visited the site prior to our first session on this matter, and, but I do want to repeat that 13, 14 years ago, whatever it was, when my wife and I moved to Oregon City, Icon Construction built our home, and Mr. Handris contributed to my campaign for city commission three or four years ago, whenever that was.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Stoll?
No ex parte contact, no conflicts of interest. I did make a site visit before the first hearing. I have not revisited the site since then.
Thank you. And Commissioner Staggs?
I have no ex parte contact or conflict of interest, and I have not seen the site.
Thank you. And as for myself, I have no ex parte contacts, no conflicts of interest. I have no bias, I have no other statement to declare, and I have not visited the site since the last meeting. At this point, would anyone in the audience or online care to question any of the commissioners on their statements? Okay, I don't see any hands up. So at this point, we will, the public record is already open. We are going to open the hearing for everything that I've already read, GLUA twenty-one dash zero-zero-zero-two-nine. I hope I can get away with this. Sears Farm Plan Unit Development. And can we, can we have the staff report? And I believe this is going to be Ms. Kelly Reed.
Yes, thank you, Chair Schlagenhoffer.
Thank you.
Kelly Reed, planner. I want to summarize where we've been here. We had the first hearing for this item on September 27th. That was a continuance. I don't think the public hearing was actually opened. It was straight continuance requested by the applicant. The first evidentiary hearing was October 25th. A request for continuance was received from Park Place Neighborhood Association. That was granted as required in the first evidentiary hearing. Our last hearing was November 8th. We took additional public testimony, found that there had been an error in public noticing, and the hearing was continued to allow time for a re-notice. Now we're here on December 13th for the third hearing. And because we, because this is our third hearing, I have a, just gonna give you a very brief summary and then talk about anything that's changed or has been added since the last hearing. This is a 35-acre site in the R-10 Zone in the Park Place Neighborhood, located right off Holcomb Boulevard. The development that is proposed here is a planned unit development of one-hundred-and-twenty-three residential lots. The proposal includes an open space, a public trail. And with planned unit developments, we have a greater amount of flexibility and discretion through this Type III review, above and beyond the typical Type II subdivision review. With the open space comes other requirements for a variety of housing types as well, and allows for phasing. There are two phases proposed with this development. So I'll also mention too that John Replinger, our transportation consultant, is here, as well as Josh Wheeler in Development Services, is available on Zoom if you all have any questions for either of those folks. Starting with the issues from last hearing, the public notice mailing addresses. We realized during the meeting that the notices had not gone out to folks beyond the urban growth boundary. So two days after that hearing, we sent out a revised notice to the properties with the stars on them in this diagram, as well as a third notice to everybody else received another notice as well, just in case there were new residents, new people that had moved in. And our GIS department is fixing the error in our mailing label system so that this doesn't happen again. Another topic that's been brought up is traffic on Holcomb Boulevard, especially as it relates to evacuation efforts in the 2020 wildfires. There were concerns brought up about long delays and backups trying to get out and evacuate the neighborhood during that time. I've added a memo to the record that addresses this issue and attempts to explain what happened, what the constraints in the area are, and then what the county disaster management department is planning to do in the near future to address some of the concerns. I spoke with Daniel Nibor and Jamie Poole that work for the county. They also reviewed the memo after I wrote it, and they provided information on a planning effort that the county will be starting early next year to create evacuation zones and evacuation routes, and then relay all of that information to residents of the county so that people can better know what their evacuation procedures are and what their routes are. In addition to that, they plan to create a map that can be accessed online, that will show real-time evacuation zones, evacuation orders, as well as traffic data, so that folks can be informed about where the best route is. I also talked in the memo about a planned Holly Lane extension. In the Park Place Concept Plan, there is a provision for a new minor arterial road that would connect Holcomb Boulevard down to Redland, and it would be an extension of Holly Lane. This street connection is critical to the development and build-out of the Park Place Concept Plan area. And when it is constructed, it will provide a secondary route out of the neighborhood. Construction access also came up last meeting. We talked about the new plan that the applicant presented to start with construction access coming from the northwest from Forsyth Boulevard, Forsyth Road, down into the site. And our transportation consultant, John Replinger, found the impacts of construction traffic don't rise to the level requiring mitigation or traffic review. Clackamas County has indicated that they would require permits for use of that public right-of-way. And that, just adding a clarification, that the location of construction access does not represent urban development outside of the city limits. It is merely for construction access. I want to note a few revisions in the staff report. From, in this version of the staff report, there were a number of slight revisions that have been made. And one of those is to condition of approval number four. That is the condition that describes what street improvements are required on Holcomb Boulevard. So the new condition, or the revised condition, includes 12-foot travel lanes, a seven-foot sidewalk, eight-foot planter strip, and a six-foot bike lane, all on the north side along the Sears Farm frontage. There will be a center turn lane as well to enter into the development. And because of the addition of the center turn lane, that portion of Holcomb Boulevard will need to be restriped so that it lines up properly with other segments of Holcomb. And so the restriping that will occur will end up making the existing on-street parking lane that's shown in this photo on the south side of Holcomb convert into a bike lane. So this section of Holcomb will have a bike lane in each direction, but will not have any on-street parking. Another revision that's been made is the addition of a condition of approval, number seventeen, to require curb extensions where the Barlow Trail accessway intersects with the new local streets in the development. And this is a result of a comment that was submitted by Commissioner Mitchell a couple of months ago. And staff agrees with the conditions suggested by Commissioner Mitchell, and we've, we do recommend that we add this to the, that this be retained in the approval. One more revision is, a new condition of approval has been added. That's number fifty-seven for a development agreement. And that development agreement between Icon, or the applicant, and the city would lay out the phasing of infrastructure that is required as this site develops. So it's kind of a technical document that will guide the city and Icon in determining which utilities, which pieces of infrastructure are required, and when. You might remember last hearing, Josh Wheeler, Assistant Cindy Engineer, discussed a number of proposed revisions to the staff report. Those revisions that he discussed have been added. Most of them have been added, as he described, within the staff report that's in your packet tonight. There are several conditions that were revised. There are a couple of places, or one main place, where we do need some direction from the planning commission. And that is for a condition of approval number forty-four. So this condition describes some mitigation that staff recommends that would mitigate for the density adjustments. The applicant has requested a density adjustment to increase density by 10%, which constitutes 11 units. And along with that comes an adjustment to lot size, to allow some of the lots to be down to 8,000 square feet in size. And staff is recommending approval of those adjustments with the mitigation that the applicant has proposed, as well as some additional mitigation. And so these two options, A and B, are presented in the condition. The wording is, kind of leaves it open for the planning commission to decide, do you want to require both A and B, one or the other? And when looking at A, you see that there are, there's a list of options of amenities to provide in the open space. And the way it's written would allow the applicant to select two from that list. And so that wording might be fine as it is, or the planning commission might wish to revise some of that language, or be more specific in your condition. I see a question?
Yeah, before we go off the slide, the pedestrian scale lighting on the shared-use path, if I remember correctly, that's already required elsewhere in the conditions, so is that- redundant? Or would that count, I guess?
So there are some pedestrian accessways in the development, the Barlow Trail accessway that goes east-west, and there's another accessway that kind of goes east-west that connects another street. Those are required by code to have lighting. The shared-use path that goes north-south along the school property is not required by code to have lighting.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
There have been some new public comments that have come in in the last week. Those include a comment from the Clackamas County Development Services Department, a letter from Christine Kozinski, and a letter from, an email from Karen Streeter. Those have all been provided, forwarded to the planning commission and added to the record. I do have a copy of Karen Streeter's email. If anyone didn't see that in your email box, you do have a hard copy at your desk. We also received a transmittal response form from Wes Rogers of the Oregon City School District that is also at your desk, that was submitted here at the hearing before it started. And that comment indicates that the proposal does not conflict with the interests of the school district. And there's no, no additional information provided with that. To respond, to summarize and respond to the public comments that were received, I've got a few bullet points here. So the county development service department described a review, reviews that would be required, permits that would be required for many of the utilities that are planned to extend outside of the site and in, outside of the urban growth boundary. And there are a number of permit processes that the county will require the applicant to go through, and those were all described and laid out and listed out in that letter. The city has no objection to any of the conditions that the county proposes. And we compared that to our own conditions of approval and found that nothing that we are requiring is going to preclude the applicant from meeting the county requirements. So there's no conflict, and the county will have its own process and will have its own conditions. And now we all have a little bit more information about what that will look like. Ms. Streeter wrote an email about stormwater and utilities as well. And we did review our, our conditions. And we found that the conditions of approval 25 through 31 address the comments about stormwater and downstream analysis. Downstream analysis is something that happens in the next stage of, of the review. So that typically doesn't happen at the land use stage, but it happens after land use and before we actually issue any grading permits. So that will be something that the applicant will be working on after land use, after the land use process is through. There are two very minor changes that staff would like to request the planning commission make. These are the last couple of slides I have. Please bear with me. One change is to remove condition number 65. This is kind of a redundant condition that we, that we meant to remove. It is kind of replaced already by condition 25. And therefore, we don't need condition number 65, and we would like to remove it to just avoid confusion in the future. The other change is a revision to condition 75. This condition requires a proportional share payment to the city for the transportation impacts that the applicant, that the development will have on various intersections where we have improvement projects in our transportation system plan. The findings of the staff report talk about these amounts being estimates, and that there will be a final calculation of the proportional share at a later date, when we have a final unit count, final costs for all of that. And so we would like to just add that disclaimer into the condition of approval as well. And that would say, would add a sentence to this condition that says, "Final payment amounts are subject to adjustment based on revised project costs or other variables." So your options. One, option one is the staff recommendation, as always. Approve with recommended conditions, removing condition 65 and revising condition 75 as presented. Approving this with revised conditions and revised findings. Denying the application with revised findings or for continuing the hearing to a date certain and providing direction on needed information at the next hearing. And I am available for any questions.
Yeah, I've got a couple of things, Ms. Reed. First off, you mentioned the construction access road, and we have nothing in our, in our code that discusses that?
That's correct.
Okay, so that means basically we don't have any authority, one way or the other, over that?
Except for requiring erosion control practices for construction access. We don't have any standards for where that construction access is located.
Okay, so that's not something that, that we can weigh in on? Okay. Can you get back to the one with the, the conditions, the A and B, that you wanted us to weigh in on? I want to make sure I understand. Okay, so on point B, there will be, per our, per our tree mitigation code, there will be a certain- number of trees required to be mitigated for the ones that they're removing, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So then is this saying that if one per lot is more than that required number of trees, then they would have to put in more than what our mitigation code calls for?
That's right. And I am going to pull up the findings, because I did that. I provided those numbers in the findings. I can pull that up.
My concern on that, I hate to see us do things that we can't enforce, and we can't keep people from cutting down street trees that are in their, in city right-of-way in the front yard. The only way that I know of that this could be spelled out to protect those trees would be a deed restriction, and I don't think anybody pays attention to that. So I think this, unfortunately, I think this sounds a whole lot better than it would turn out in reality, because there is nothing in our code that prevents somebody from cutting down a tree in their backyard, right?
So we do, any mitigation trees that are planted through Chapter 1741, we do require that a covenant be recorded on the deed to protect that tree. Now, you know, you might be right about whether people pay attention to that or not, but we do have an enforcement mechanism based on that. So that covenant would require that that tree be replaced if it is cut down.
Okay.
And to answer the first part of the question, according to the applicant, 37 mitigation trees are required based on the tree removal that they have proposed. And if you added this requirement, letter B here, to require a tree on every lot, then that would mean 86 additional trees, so 37 plus 86.
Okay, thank you. Let's see, next, the duplex lots. Are those required to be duplexes, or would duplexes be allowed there?
So duplexes are allowed on any corner lot in the R-10, R-8, or R-6 zones. And because of the requirements for residential planned unit developments, the applicant has to provide a variety of housing types. And so to meet that requirement, to meet that standard, 18 of the units in the development have to be something other than a single dwelling. Or actually, sorry, more than 18, but 10, I think it's 25%. So the applicant has chosen duplexes to be the different housing type, and has indicated that those would be placed on, there are at least 18 corner lots in the subdivision. And so the applicant can meet that standard by providing 18 corner duplexes. And how that would work after this is all, after it gets platted and before the houses are built, we would require a covenant that would be placed on the corner lots to require any future builder to build a duplex on that lot. So it would be required. Now, there is a little bit of flexibility in, you know, if the applicant doesn't want to put a duplex on Lot 1 and wants to move it to a different corner, that's something that they could do before, you know, before building permits are issued, as long as there are the right number. We, I think, our process would not require those exact proposed locations be maintained.
Okay. And the proportional share of the necessary improvements is based on the number of dwelling units, not the number of lots?
That's my understanding, but John Replinger is here, and he might be able to answer that question better than I would.
Okay, yeah, and I have some other questions for Mr. Replinger also later. One more thing that concerns me, Condition Number 57, where you talk about phasing of the improvements. And I went and looked at that, and it basically says that the city and the developer will work out a schedule. That troubles me, because I think as a city, we are not very good at requiring the public improvements early enough. And in particular, I'm concerned about the left turn lane. And how, I think we need to tie that somehow, and I don't know if that's in our conditions, to prior to the completion of Phase 1, or something, so that the residents of Park Place neighborhood that are trying to go past there aren't waiting for the last house in the subdivision to be built before they get the left turn lane. Understand my concern?
Mm-hmm.
So how can we, and maybe that's something the commission members need to discuss, but how can we, I'm not satisfied with, we'll work out an agreement. I think particularly that left turn lane, because of the traffic impact, needs to be clearly spelled out when that's going to happen. That's all the questions I have for you.
Yeah, you could add, if the Planning Commission so desired, you could add a sentence to that Condition Number 57 to specify that, that the left turn lane be included before the final plat of Phase 1.
I'll leave that for the other commissioners to weigh in.
I'd like to just add a little clarification on Commissioner Mitchell's request. Would you want the left turn, are you proposing the left turn lane be done before the last house is completed, or before it enters any occupation? How would you like it worded? What do you think?
I'm open for discussion. I'd like to know what the other commissioners think, whether it's, once the, can't tie it to when the last house is built, because who knows how many years that might take? So I think it has to do something with some percentage of occupancy in Phase 1. And I don't know what the number is for that.
Okay, yeah, because sometimes neighborhoods don't get finished, depending on the economy down there, it could be a decade.
Right.
Okay, all right, thank you. Okay, Commissioner West, did you have a question?
Yes, going back to the 44 on the A, capital A, capital B. I thought we spoke last time about adding some.
Oh, hold on. I don't know, we've got something going on with AV.
Oh, Mike, I'm sorry.
Was it just Commissioner West?
I didn't have my mic on.
Okay.
I could not hear her online. I could not hear anything that was said.
Okay, I'll start over. So on Condition 44 on capital A, capital B, I thought that last meeting, we, so, okay, on A, it could be adding another small a of adding eight more trees, but I thought we added a few more extra trees to that open space in lots, between lots 11 and 12. Did we not do that?
You did. It started out as four, add four trees, and you directed us to change it to eight. So it's eight now.
So they've already done little a, lowercase a?
Well, we've revised the language in the condition. If you want to make sure that those trees are included in that open space, then you can tell us to word this condition such that little a is required and it's not optional.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, I have one. It has to do with the response form from Oregon City Schools. The response is, "The proposal does not conflict with our interests." My question is, have we ever gotten a response that was not, "Proposal does not conflict with our interests"?
From the school district, or from anyone?
Just from any development over the years. Have we ever triggered some kind of a school capacity problem with any development?
In my experience, we have not. Sometimes the school district will provide information on enrollment and capacity, and they track population growth very closely so that they can plan for capacity. I don't recall any land use reviews that have, where we've seen a comment saying that the school does not have capacity.
Okay. All right, I was just curious, because somehow, people mention, no specific conversation, I'm just bringing things up. People always talk about school overcrowding, and it's surprising that it never gets brought up that the school has, the school district has an issue with any development.
I think they plan very well for population growth.
Okay, so this implies that the school has no capacity issues, and the development would not cause any more capacity issues? That's what we're looking at here?
I think.
Okay. All right, that was the only thing I had. I think everybody else asked some pretty good questions already. And then, so I think we're good for now, so.
Mr. Chair.
Yes?
Came up with a question just now.
Okay, perfect.
Regarding the slide that's on the screen, capital B, planting one large native tree species in each backyard, would that lead to a covenant on every single lot requiring that tree, or requiring the maintenance of that, or replacement of that tree?
So I think if you would like to require the covenant, that language should be added to the condition. The covenant, so right now, if the language is left as it is, a covenant would be required for the 37 trees that are required for tree mitigation, but not necessarily for these additional 86 trees, unless you specifically require that.
Okay, thank you. Okay, any other questions for Ms. Reed?
Yeah, I have one.
Okay, Commissioner Stax.
Where are the 37 mitigation trees planted?
We don't have a final tree mitigation plan from the applicant. I think the indication from the applicant was that those trees would be planted somewhere, you know, on the private lots in the subdivision. Until we get a final tree mitigation plan before the final plat, we don't know exactly where those trees will go. I don't know which number it is, but there is a condition of approval requiring a final tree mitigation plan.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, anything else? Okay, at this point, I think we're ready to hear from the applicant, and do we know who will be representing the applicant?
Chair Slughn-Hoffer?
Yes.
I have questions for Mr. Replinger. Is the right time to do that now, before we hear from the applicant, or should we wait and hear, get my questions in later?
Is it possible the applicant could clear up your question?
Probably not. I don't think so.
Now would be a good time.
Let's do it now.
Okay.
I'm sorry, please state your name and city of residence. Thank you.
Good evening, John Replinger, traffic consultant to the city of Oregon City, a resident of City of Portland. Thanks for being here. You looked lonely over there the other night. You didn't get called on, and they kind of asked you something. No, I do have some questions. In my time in the Planning Commission, in the hearings that I've listened to before, the traffic generation, the trip generation numbers always come from the Institute of Traffic Engineers, right?
Occasionally, we accept other data.
Is that what most cities use?
Mostly.
What I'm getting at is, I think an awful lot of people would say that they feel that those numbers understate reality. So I'm wondering if there is, as a city, if we could decide, we think this standard more accurately reflects Oregon City.
Theoretically, I guess it would be possible to do so, but practically, there is such a huge amount of data that has been collected in all manner of communities across the country that I think would be very difficult to come up with enough studies specific to Oregon City to justify a different rate.
Okay.
I've been in the business for decades now, and it is quite common for people to disbelieve the manual. And we do additional studies and find out that the manual is really good.
Shit, I'm sorry. And of course, it's a spam call. Yeah. I apologize to everybody. Okay, thank you. I was struck by something in your report, and I guess I'm a little disappointed in myself for not catching it before, but you made a comment in there that our city does not have a standard for traffic volumes on local streets. We do on intersection, but not on streets.
That's correct.
So again, is that common? Do most, do other cities have that kind of a standard for streets? Because, again, the reason I ask, for instance, that Park Place is the great example, but it's not the only place in Oregon City, and it's kind of spelled out in the report, that 82% of the trips from this development are going to end up in the Holcomb, Abernathy, Redland intersection, which is, what, a couple of miles probably, away, which is a pretty unusual situation. So would we be better served to have a standard for street performance that might help us account for the fact that you can't get away from the main routes in Oregon City? Do most cities have that?
No, in my experience, most cities do not have a standard for local streets. It's intersection, an intersection-based performance standard is what's typically used throughout the country, and I'm only aware of a couple cities that have a standard for a local residential street.
Okay, thank you. And then on the question of evacuation, are there any cities, again, that have anything in their code that relate to emergency evacuation situations in capacity?
None that I'm aware of.
Okay.
I mean, I can tell you that various actions have been undertaken, some exploration, some ideas, there were some down in the Ashland-Talent area, discussions about potentially having emergency ramps onto I-5, but that has not gone anywhere, as far as I know, beyond the study stage.
Okay. One more thing. And if you can hopefully explain this in a layman driver's terms, so let's talk again about that intersection, Redland, Abernathy, Holcomb. And I'm driving to work one morning, and when I get there, the volume over capacity right at that time is, say, a .99.
Right.
And then I go to work tomorrow, and it's a little later, it's a little busier, it's a 1.0. And then the next day, I hit it, and it's really busy, and it's a 1.1. How does that feel different to me as a driver?
Well, it's probably not going to feel much different, given those slight increments that you're talking about with, you know, 1% of capacity. You will experience somewhat longer delay. But, you know, the critical thing that you will recognize is whether you got through the intersection on the first green, first time the green came up, or the second time, or you had to wait for an extraordinarily long period. So there's a variability of traffic from day to day, and it can be some factors such as a fender bender that occurred. And just the delay that occurred with that five minutes of, you know, getting the cars separated from each other and off the road, and get them disappeared, can cause a backlog, a congestion, for 15 or 20 minutes. a congestion for 15 or 20 minutes. So that may have occurred an hour before you arrived at the intersection, and you're still experiencing that. So you're going to see a little bit of variation from day to day, and the volume to capacity ratio is going to change a bit day to day.
Okay. So if it's at a 1.0, what are my chances that I get through on the first green light?
Depends whether or not you're lucky. I mean, it, it, you know, it kind of depends whether, you know, whether that, the other drivers got out of their driveway a few seconds earlier, you know, whether you're the 12th car in line or the 16th car in line.
Okay. So I'm trying to split hairs too much.
Sure.
Okay. Just a comment, if you have a thought on it. I had an ODOT engineer tell me one time that if Oregon streets and roads were in California, that we wouldn't have nearly the issue because the capacity on, on California roads, because of the way they drive more aggressively, is better than, is higher than polite Oregon drivers.
I've, I've heard that argument before.
Okay. That's all I have.
But we do, we do have the experience that we in the Portland metro area get more cars through an intersection during an hour with the exact same configuration as the folks in the city of Ontario, Oregon, or in Ashland. So as we get used to more congestion, we make adjustments in terms of our driving habits. So we do end up increasing our capacity a little bit as we get used to it.
Great. Okay. That's all I have. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Replinger while we've got him up here? Okay. I just wanted to, wanted to mention something. It's, it's not really a question, it's just kind of an observation about our unique topography. When something does happen, like Mr. Replinger mentioned, a fender bender, we don't have a lot of alternates. So something happens at the bottom of the hill, there's not a whole lot of other ways people can go. They may, you know, it's not like Portland where something happens on 52nd, you take 62nd or, or, you know, Division. I mean, there's a lot of ways around it. So a minor problem for us turns into a big problem. If something happens on 213, it can back everybody up to, you know, past Glen Oak up on top of the hill, and it often does. I can tell something happened on 205 sometimes when I go to work and I, and I leave near the community college. So we don't have alternates. It's, it's not really something that shows up in the traffic reports, but maybe at some point it should. Maybe, maybe considering a, an issue and how bad it can compound, maybe that should be something that's, that's covered at some point. But it's not something that we do consider. It's not something we can make our decisions on. But to me, it seems like something we should somehow consider in some way. Okay. Is there anybody else that, someone would like to question before we move on to the applicant? Okay. And who is the applicant?
I'll be starting off tonight, Chairman.
All right. Go ahead, and you have 15 minutes. And please state your name and city of residence. Thank you.
My name is Rick Givens. I'm a planning consultant. I'm in Oregon City. I will take a crack at a couple of things here, then the applicant's attorney, Mike Raindown here, will, will finish things up. So let me, Mike Robinson, excuse me. First of all, condition number four, that was a last minute change by staff.
Mr. Givens?
Yep.
Can you try to speak up a little bit? We can't hear you very well in here.
How's that? Is that better?
It's a little better, yes.
Okay. I'll do the very best I can here. Like condition number four, as you know, there was a change to increase the lane width to 12 feet. We've worked through that and managed to revise or design accordingly to make that happen. But it has causes to have to squeeze some of the lots down in order to, to make things fit. It'd take about three feet more out of the rear of the lots. As a result, lot number one will no longer be suitable for a duplex. We just wanted to make sure that as Kelly mentioned, that we have the flexibility to move those duplex lots around as need be in order to, to make them work. We are committed to the number of lots, our number of duplex lots that is specified in the staff report, just need flexibility. So we want that to be on the record. Regarding the construction access, you know, there is a option of, of using the road to the north that we illustrated in our last presentation. We wanted to make sure that if we go that route because of neighborhood concerns, Mr. Sears has given us the flexibility down where it would intersect with Forsyth Road to go around his outbuilding that he has down there and connect directly to Forsyth. That would avoid the neighbors' concerns about impacts on Gurkman Road. So if we go that way, that's, that's certainly what we will do. We may also want to use Holcomb itself. We've had some concerns about getting equipment in there because of the low wire condition, but we want to make sure we have, that we represent that we have the option of going either way. And we will work with staff to establish the best way. If need be, we will, you know, raise the, the wires as needed in order to get a access that direction. So just wanted to be clear that we are still in the process of sorting that out. That'll be done during the construction plan preparation stage. Want to make sure that we get a plan that works for everybody and doesn't hold up traffic and doesn't impact neighbors. There was a letter to the record by Christine Kosinski asking about why notice wasn't provided on Holly Lane. I think that's pretty clear. Just wanted to comment on that, that the city's code does not, it specifies how far we notify, and the city prepared the notice form as to the city's notification requirements. Technically, Holly Lane, you know, currently doesn't, isn't affected by this project at all. It's, it's a long ways away. So there's no reason that you would notify Holly Lane anyway. Let's see. Regarding the number of trees proposed, we have no objection to the requirement for an additional 86 trees being planted, which would end up being one, combined with our 37 mitigation trees, a total of 123 or one tree on each lot. We have no objection, objection to you making that condition of approval. Regarding condition number 57, which deals with the turn lane, we have no objection to making that a condition of approval that'd be provided prior to the recording of the plat for phase one. So we don't have to worry about it, you know, number of houses built or whatever. We'll, we'll get that in and constructed with the development of phase one. I, I didn't hear anything in the questions to Mr. Replinger that, that really relates specifically to this project. They really were relating to possible future changes to the city's standards. But we have done a traffic study and performance with the city's standards. It was reviewed by Mr. Replinger, found to meet the standards, and it was found that the traffic meets trip generation requirements and alternative mobility standards. So I think everything I had on my list is complete. I will now turn it over to Mr. Robinson.
A great unveiling. Good evening, Chair, members of the Commission. My name is Michael Robinson. My mailing address is 1211 Southwest Fifth Avenue, Suite 1900, Portland 97204. I'm a land use attorney of the law firm of Schwabie Williamson Ryan. I'm here on behalf of the applicant tonight. I just have one issue I want to raise, and Chair, if it's okay to do this, I need to ask Ms. Reed a question. Kelly, could you put the slide up regarding the condition of approval providing for proportional share payments? I think my reading glasses are going to be powerful enough for this. So our concern is it's, an applicant needs to know. Thanks. The concern the applicant asked me to raise is that... Did I try again? Okay. Thanks. The concern that the applicant asked me to raise is having certainty about what that cost is. It's, it's one thing if, if, if the applicant wants to interject additional figures or variables. It's another if they come from another source. So we think the condition needs to fix the cost unless we ask for something that would, that would adjust the cost. Otherwise, the applicant doesn't have certainty about what the cost is going into the project. That's the only issue I have. We appreciate your time tonight. If you have questions after public testimony, please ask us in rebuttal. Other than that, we hope you follow your staff recommendation and approve the application tonight. And thank you for your time.
Mr. Chairman, this is Rick Givens again. Can you give me the floor for just one more minute? I did have one other item. Can, can you hear me okay?
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure. Regarding condition of approval number 38, the applicant has pointed out to me that they have significant concerns about the requirement for 80% of the street tree, for 95% of the street trees being planted, and only 5% utilizing the fee in lieu of option. In practice, they have found consistently in other projects that that has been a standard that's nearly impossible to meet. They would like a provision that said 80% of all required street trees either planted in the planter strip in the front yard or with, or else 20% utilized in the fee in lieu of option. Who asks that you consider making that, and when you do, that change when you do your deliberations? You have any questions regarding that point?
Any questions? I don't see any.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. No, we have no more questions for the applicant. Okay. I'm not seeing any. Thank you. Okay. Okay. Do we have anybody, any members of a neighborhood association or government agency that wanted to speak? Okay. All right. We've already heard from Mr. Robinson, so only public comment we have is from Mr. Tom Guile. You have three minutes, and then please state your name and city of residence. Thank you. No, you don't need to run up.
Greetings, Commissioners. My name is Tom Guile, Oregon City resident. I was really hesitant to come up and say anything because I know you don't like to hear complaints or observations. But I've been sitting through all these hearings on this, and I've not said anything. But tonight, I noticed, I made a few observations, and one of them has to do with the, and this is with all due respect to all those present, the GIS notification, that error. That was discussed years back when I was on the planning commission. We took votes on it, we had the footage, all that. We discussed notifications, yet it seems like a neglectful error, purposefully, to all of a sudden, oh, we need to notify everybody else, and it just delays the process. But we did, as a planning commission, vote and approve on the footage of how far it should be, but also people and their urban growth boundaries. And it just seems, years later, and years later, and years later, it still appears. It seems really strange. Mike Mitchell and Dirk, good comments tonight about the traffic, especially on Holcomb Boulevard. I kind of took notes here that only, I think, three of you actually visited the site, and, and that means traveling that road. If you haven't traveled that road and seen Holcomb Boulevard, I don't know how you can vote on this as a commissioner. We've talked about the evacuation and how bad that was. It was an hour to, to get out of Trailview and another hour to get down. But that's not really the issue. Holcomb itself is a bad road. It's a very narrow road. On one side, you have a valley that drops off, and the other, you have the Oregon View Manor. And recently this summer, they built a home within 10 feet of the road, so there's no way they can expand it. We heard about Holly Lane. Holly Lane, they have not acquired that property yet to even go down all the way to Redland Road. It hasn't come before you yet, but all that planned park place at the up above, there's no place for it to go except up above to Holcomb to go down. You'll be seeing an article in the newspaper about that shortly. There's no way they can go down. They have to go up and around and down Holcomb. So all this traffic that's been going on with the airstrip, with what's being planned with the Sears property, with what's being planned with Holcomb, that's going to block Holcomb up, not just on a evacuation route, but on any, any given day with, sometimes it can be backed all the way down to the, the turning point there at Holcomb, and as it turns around, the sharp point to Redland, because of school buses. Seven or eight will come up, and they back up, up the road, and that backs up all the traffic either going up to school or those coming, trying to come down. So it's not the intersections, it's the road itself. And I was thinking about this as I sat there. I served as a chair of the CIC for three years, eight years on the planning commission. I've been off three years. That's all, about 15 years. I have never yet seen Mr. Replinger ever disapprove or change anything having to do with the developer's traffic report. He always approves it, no changes. I have never seen it in my 15 years. And I keep wondering, is he paid by the city to do this, to make these decisions? Or is he making a decision on behalf of the residents, like on Holcomb Boulevard? Because again, Mike, I brought up some good ideas there. That's really rough. If you live up there, you have no idea what it's like even on an average day. It's very rough. Let's see. What else? I was making a little note to myself. The trees, the trees in the backyard. As you know, with the work session, with the cities, we've held three work sessions now regarding the trees on the strips, the planter strips. In Trailview, almost all the trees are going to be, have to ripped up because they're lifting up the sidewalks. We're not, we're not the first neighborhood. Apparently, they're going to go back because there's been several neighborhoods that's happened to. But we're talking about trees in the backyards. Well, this last ice storm, we had trees that Syntex put in. One fell and broke the fence on one side, one fell on an Icon, Icon house next door, and Icon had to come and cut the tree only to the point of our fence. If you're going to put trees and require trees in the backyards, I would think you would allow the citizen or the resident to make the decision where that tree might go. Some of them may want to have a patio or build a deck or something, and if you plant a tree just anywhere in the back of a yard, it's just not fair to the neighbor. And also if it's too close to fences, because I found out through insurance, that I may not be responsible for the tree that falls on either neighbor, but those people are. So that's something to really consider when you start thinking about putting trees. We all love trees, but putting them in somebody's yard where they have no control over it and what they might build in there themselves just doesn't seem right. I think that was all. Let's see. Yep, that was it, and I appreciate your time.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Tom. All right. That was the last public comment. Do we have any questions for anyone? Okay. All right. Then we're going to close the public hearing.
I think the applicant gets rebuttal.
I'm sorry. Would the applicant like to address any of the issues brought up?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mike Robinson on behalf of the applicant. First, I should ask, are there any questions that the planning commission has of the applicant before you close the hearing? If so, this is our last chance for to answer them, so if you have some, we'd be happy to do so. And I just have a very short rebuttal to Mr. Guile's testimony. It was appropriate to raise the notice error, error at the last hearing, and the city provided the correct notice before this hearing. They also put an affidavit in the record demonstrating that notice had been properly given. With respect to traffic, if you look at staff report pages 51 through 54, there's a good staff analysis of the applicant's traffic impact analysis, and then Mr. Replinger's review. Traffic impact analysis prepared by Icon's applicant, used the professional standards they're required to use. It demonstrated that the mobility standards in the code are satisfied. John reached the same conclusion. There is no competing traffic analysis from anyone else, and the reason that Todd and John reached those conclusions is they use the standards they're required to use as part of their profession. So the evidence is there that the mobility standards are met. Mr. Chair, that's all we have tonight. Again, if you have questions, please ask us. Other than that... Other than that, we hope that you'll approve the application when you vote tonight, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay. Any questions? Okay. Now we're closing the public record. Okay. We have a few things to discuss. Do we just go down the list? We start with, how about we start with number 44? The density mitigation, A or A and B? Yep. Yeah.
I'd like A. I'd like A. I think that B, as Mr. Guile said, that's a tree in everyone's backyard where they may not want it. I'd go with A.
I totally agree with that.
I think having a covenant for a tree in the backyard is...
Excessive.
Excessive, exactly.
Okay. So, the consensus is just A. Okay. Just A on 44. Anybody have objection to removing number 65? Okay.
Which one was that?
The redundant one about, was it the storm water? Please help.
Yes. It's the stormwater condition that was redundant. Yes.
Okay. Number 75, proportional share of the traffic improvements. What was the decision or the direction there? Yes, please, thank you.
Why can't we make this, why can't we make this a specific number, and that's it?
I think that was a concern. How do we make it a specific number if we call it a proportional share, but then we give them a specific number, so?
What is normal in this situation, Kelly?
So, the amounts, the amounts that are shown here, 74,000, 60,000, those are preliminary estimates based on the trip generation data from the applicant, based on, you know, how many new units will be built, and what traffic that would generate, and where those trips go, how many of those cars are going through the intersection during the peak hour. So, that's the data that feeds in to calculate those numbers. The other piece of data comes from the city's TSP project list, and how much each of those projects cost. So, we're calculating the applicant's impact on that intersection, and they're paying a proportional share of the TSP, the cost of the TSP project that solves the problem at that intersection. So, whether it's adding a lane, or adding a signal at the intersection, you know, the signal costs a million dollars, and the applicant pays their fraction based on how many cars they're putting through that intersection. So, the way these numbers could change is if the city's cost estimates for those TSP projects change, if the applicant's trip distribution somehow changes, or if, like the Phase 1 and Phase 2, if there's slight changes on how many lots are built in Phase 1, and how many lots are built in Phase 2, then those numbers will change as well. So, we would, you know, we would do a final calculation when the time comes, when the payments are due.
Okay. All right. I think we're going to have some questions on this one. I'm not a developer, but I know I like to have a worst-case scenario number when I get bids, and I don't see that we're giving them that. I feel like there's a lot of room where, I mean, we can't give them a solid number because we don't know what the numbers are. So, it could, who knows how high it could go? Is there any way we could call it a, you know, up to a certain percentage more possible? Because, I don't know how comfortable anybody else is with this.
I was thinking the same thing, of some percentage.
Yeah, me too. I do, yeah.
That's what I was thinking too, because just to leave it open doesn't seem like a reasonable, it sounds like it could really go in a lot of different directions.
Yeah, public improvements can go a long way. You can get a pretty comprehensive traffic signal installation in just one intersection. So, but yeah, I wouldn't know how to word that. Anybody have any input? Is that something we can legally do? Cap it?
I mean, I think the applicant's asking that you cap it. I think the applicant's asking for Condition 75, as it's written, and capped at 74,000 for Phase 1 and 60,000 for Phase 2. My understanding is of the way these are calculated is that John Replinger provides an estimate, and that's what the condition language usually is, is it is estimated to be X, and it may be Y, depending on, you know, how things look, but, you know, I would think we could do it by a percentage, or some alternative that would put some boundaries on it, which is, I think, what you're suggesting. I don't have a good idea right now what those boundaries might be, but maybe Ms. Reed or Mr. Replinger might.
Okay. The way I'm seeing it, the applicant, part of the variable is their numbers, the number of their lots. I don't know, is it just lot-based? How many? Okay. But if it's a percentage, and then that's also based on the maximum dollar that city improvements would be, that's not, we're not giving them a constant. We're giving them a big variable, and we're not telling them how far that could go. So, I think that kind of, we're concerned on the city's side of improvements. We need to give them a kind of a cap on that. What they're doing, that's on them, but I think they're going to want a cap from us on how high our traffic improvements could be. So, I think, and it's something that they need to be comfortable with too. So, that's, it's going to be a two-way conversation there, and I think they need to work that one out on their own. I don't know if we can do that, so. Those are my concerns. Maybe someone can help me out.
Chair, can I make a suggestion?
Yes, please.
I suggest that we do not add, that we do not revise the Condition Number 75, that we keep it the way it is, at 74,322, and 60,933, and not change it. Then they have certainty, and we're getting 121 new homes in our city, which is great. So, that's what I would suggest.
Okay. All right. So, it sounds like if we go off of, and then whose projections is it? Is it Mr. Riplinger's projections for traffic improvements that these numbers are going off of?
It comes from the applicant's...
The transportation system plan, correct?
The cost estimates for the TSP projects? Yes. They're part of the transportation system plan.
Okay, so maybe we should go off the current numbers that this was based on.
That's what these are.
Yes.
Maybe we should lock it in on that, and not allow it to change if the transportation, if the TSP numbers change.
It is possible that the city could update those cost estimates at some point, right? So, you know, that's kind of what you're talking about, I think, yeah.
Yeah, because I don't know that we know how old those numbers are, and we all know everything is getting more expensive. So, you know, I understand the idea behind this suggested addition, but I also know that, I can understand the applicant's point of view, that, you know, this is a, you know, open-ended, without some sort of maximum, you know, maybe we're talking about these amounts, and then that they could be adjusted up to a maximum of 10% or 15% or whatever. And I would think that legally, we could do that.
Yeah, but we, yes, but we need some adequate basis to justify that 10%, 15%. I mean, we don't, I wouldn't feel comfortable with it just being an arbitrary 5%, 10% number. I mean, we'd have to have some reasonable explanation for that cap. And I, but my recommendation would be that you all talk about the other conditions, and I will walk over, and Kelly and John and I will stand in the corner and come up with some ideas, if you want.
Okay. All right.
You know, I'm trying, I'm just thinking back to other instances like this, and I think we have always provided a firm number. I'm thinking of one that's, you know, was just, it was like six houses added just down the street from my home, and I know they were given an exact number toward improvements at 213 in Beaver Creek, and it didn't say anything about adjustments. It just said, here's your amount.
But six units will be accomplished in a shorter period of time than potentially 128 units.
Right.
Right? I mean, that, just absorbing that into the system may take a number of years, right?
Right.
So, I just want to add a little bit of how I see it, or my language on it. You know, I thought when we do business and have, make decisions like this, that we make them on the best information we have at the time. And if we didn't make it on the best information we have now, how would we ever make a decision? And this feels like if we change this an arbitrary percent, but you guys are going to work on that, that it's a little bit like moving the goalpost. So, here you have the, you're in the, whatever you think where you're at, and then down the road, it's going to be all different. So, it's not the game you started in. So, that's just my two cents.
Okay. I wanted to bring something up, and I know we're going to split this in 17 different pieces and then put them back together in a different way. But one thing that we, that I think the whole construction industry saw in this last year is how drastically things can change for small reasons. The price of steel tripled. I know that the city itself had a fencing project that they had to cancel because the price of the fence, I think, tripled. And so, if something like that happened again, where for some reason the price of steel went up, and we had to, you know, oh, I'm sorry, well, the price of steel triples, now your share is going to be 130,000. I mean, that's a, it's a substantial difference, and I understand that the market moved it in that direction, but I don't know if we can hold them responsible for that when we, you know, we tell them one thing, and then the market does something crazy, because at that point, you almost want to just postpone the project, like we postponed the fence. Sometimes you have to. But if we have these guys on the hook for their share, we may just say, well, you know, since they're paying a good portion of it, we'll just keep going. So, I think they want to protect themselves from that, and I don't blame them. That's my opinion, and maybe you can write something amazing up that covers all that.
Chair, Dirk, can I, can I just have a minute?
We're having a hard time hearing you, Chris.
Can you hear me now?
Pretty good. Do your best.
Okay. Great. I'd like to just remind everybody that we're talking about 121 new homes in the Oregon community, which is, the benefit of that far outweighs what I would call an arbitrary condition. So, again, I'm going to suggest that we stick with the numbers that we have today, and make that the condition, and not change it.
Okay. Thank you. And then, we're having a request for a break. I'm going to say at 9 o'clock, we think about a five-minute break. Okay. Is that enough? Okay. So, we got about seven minutes to go. All right. So, number 75, that's, you know, that's actually the last one I've got written down here. Mr. Robinson brought up number 38, and he wanted some direction on that. What was 38?
Condition 38, we don't have a slide for it.
95% of the street trees?
Yeah, and requesting...
For 80%.
Okay.
Or fee in lieu of that 80%.
80/20.
I can understand that.
Your mic.
Sorry. Panic waving from our audiovisual guy. I forgot to turn my microphone on, I apologize. I can see their point for 80% and using a fee in lieu instead, because when you look at the details in our street tree code, it calls for them every certain number of feet, but then they have to be X number of feet from a driveway, they have to be X number of feet from the water line, they have to be X number of feet from the intersection, and all of a sudden, you can't fit all of the ones that, you just had a blank piece of paper, and we're drawing a checkerboard, you could fit them in, but you can't when you build in all the other stuff that's called in our code. So, for me, I have no problem with planning at least 80% and fee in lieu for the difference.
I agree with that.
I agree too.
I agree.
Okay. It sounds like we have a unanimous direction on that one. All right. All right. Do we want to do a, take our break before we...
There was another condition.
Yeah, which one was that?
Number 57, the left turn lane and the timing of that construction prior to the, the applicant said they were okay with requiring that prior to the plating of Phase 1.
Right.
So, they're good with it. We should add it.
Yeah, I didn't bring it up because they were okay with it, so that was...
Perfect.
Yeah.
Whoever's going to make the motion needs to come there.
Yep.
Bring it up for that.
Okay. Well, hopefully, staff keeps up, keeps track of all the conditions of approval, because that'd be a complicated motion. Okay. Would you like to take the break now? Okay. All right. Let's take the break now.
Recording stopped.
Recording stopped.
Are we good?
Yes.
Okay, all right, uh, we're back from break, and then-
Chair Schlag and Huffer.
Yes, Commissioner Mitchell.
Uh, um, I'm afraid I need to ask that we reopen the, the public hearing and, because I have a, a couple of questions from Mr. Riplinger that relate directly to, to this B issue that we're talking about right here.
Okay, all right, so let's, uh, reopen the public hearing. And if we could call up Mr. Riplinger, we've, uh-
Is this legit?
Um, you, you don't need to reopen the record to call Mr. Riplinger because he's city staff.
Oh.
Uh, but I'm guessing that you're probably gonna wanna put in some new evidence as part of this, so it's fine to reopen the record. I just wanted to point out comments between planning commissioners and staff did not require reopening the record.
Okay.
But you reopened it, so it's okay. We, we don't have a bunch of people out here who are gonna wanna testify about whatever Mr. Riplinger has to say, so I think it will be wrong.
All right, thank you. Okay, uh, Commissioner Mitchell, uh, please proceed.
All right, I apologize that I didn't see this before, but I just wanna make sure we're dealing with the right trip numbers when you generated the, the fractional, a proportional share. Um, on page three, table three of the applicant's letter, uh, transportation, or, what is it? The T I S, I can't remember the abbreviations. It calls out for 106 AM trips, 142 PM trips, and 1,436 total trips. Right? That's the, those are correct numbers of trips.
Okay.
On- And the proportional share as identified in the staff memo and my letter based only upon the P M peak hour trips of 142. Yes. And it is specific to the number of trips going through each individual intersection. Okay. My concern is on page two of your letter, it says P M trip 124. So what I'm wondering is what top line number did you start with when you calculated, then calculated the percentage at each intersection in order to get the proportional share? Well, um, hey.
Now, Commissioner Mitchell, is this because the traffic impact study was revised? Is that where the numbers changed?
Well, it, it may, it may be that, let's see. I think what happened, a previous version of their letter had the numbers that you have here, but it was, it was using 128 as the number of units, which is the number of lots. And then they came out with their, with a more recent appendix on number of housing units, which is now 142, so they increased the peak trips. And I, I just wanna make sure before we figure out how much per trip, we gotta make sure we have the right trip number. Well, the, the trip, let's see. I mean, I'm balancing between different, uh, um, couple possibilities. One is that, uh, uh, one is that I transposed a number in my report. But the important thing is that the calculation of proportional share is based upon the applicant, the applicant's traffic engineer did a calculation of the number of trips going through each intersection. Those numbers, I'm confident are correct in terms of, I mean, we, we do have, if you look at the, if you look at the table in the, uh, um, in the last part of my, let's see, on, on, on pages eight and nine of, of my, my comment letter, it shows the number of trips going through each of those intersections in phase one and in phase two.
And, and those are based off of the right total number of-
Yes, and they're based off the values provided by the applicant's traffic engineer in his transportation impact study.
Okay.
Uh, yes, there, those, those numbers I'm confident of.
Okay, all right, thank you. Okay, any other questions for Mr. Riplinger while he's back up? Okay. All right, Commissioner Mitchell, did that answer your concerns?
That answers my concern.
Okay. So we had gone through the conditions of approval. Um, number fifty-seven they were okay with, we gave a direction on forty-four, removed sixty-five. Did we figure out number seventy-five? How did that conversation go?
We, um, talked about it and the the real variability here is with respect to the city's costs for improvements. And, um, Mr. Riplinger pointed out that they've significantly increased over time because there are things we know now that we didn't know then, so, um, that is, the, the trip distribution is probably not likely to change. Um, and the number of lots is gonna be, you know, about this. So, um, the sort of staff's position on this is that, um, unless we were to come up with a per lot, um, per lot, uh, amount, which would be difficult to do because of the distribution differentials that Mr. Riplinger just talked about, um, I think staff is prepared to rescind its request for, um, additional variability in the language, um, and to sort of live with the best, our current capital improvement costs, acknowledging that the city needs to do a better job of updating those more regularly so that we can be capitalizing on, um, ensuring that development pays its proportionate share. Does that make sense? And I think that that potentially reflects where the planning commission may be as well. Maybe where the planning commission is as well. That the planning commission expressed that concern of the changing the goalposts
Yeah.
in the future because the city may reevaluate the plant, the projects that it has included for Holcomb and Abernathy, for example, and the cost may go up from 2.8 million to 10 million, right? And that's what the applicant was concerned about. And I think that's what the planning commission was also concerned about. And, um, I can't, I can't, we can't come up with a I can't, I'm not comfortable recommending an arbitrary 15% cap on that when I don't know I don't have an adequate factual base on which to make that recommendation. So, I think, I, we've agreed that we're gonna accept condition seventy-five as it's drafted now and revisit this in the near term.
Okay, so. Um, I don't think we need an applicant rebuttal. Uh, I think we are, we are good. Um, I guess at this point, does anyone have any more questions, or are we ready for a, someone to make a motion?
Um-
Yes.
Chair Schlag and Huffer, um, just for the good of the order, I think you should close the public record because you opened it. Um-
Right.
And I think Ms. Reed has a list of conditions that I think tracks with what, where you all are, and if it would be helpful, I think she could read them and then you could so move, if that would be helpful.
That'd be great. Okay, so at this point, I'm gonna close the public record. And now if, uh, Ms. Reed could please read off all the, uh, conditions of approval and see if we're in agreement with all the changes and recommendations.
Hey, you ready?
Yes, I'm ready, thank you.
It would be a move, a motion to approve, uh, with the recommended conditions of approval, um, making the following changes. Change the percentage in condition thirty-eight from ninety-five percent to eighty percent. Remove, uh, letter B, capital B, from condition forty-four. Add, add a sentence to condition fifty-seven which says the left turn lane on Holcomb Boulevard is required to be constructed prior to recording of a plat for phase one. Removing entirely condition number sixty-five.
Yes.
That's it.
Yeah, okay. So moved for, oh. And the- Oh, and seventy-five. Yeah.
So there would be no change to condition seventy-five, so the recommended change that we talked about would not be made.
Yeah, that, that, we're, we're happy with the fixed amounts.
Yes.
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So moved. We have a motion?
Uh, yes, so moved for GLUA two-one dash zero 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 two-nine.
And I'll second it.
Okay, and we have a first by, uh, uh, Commissioner Stoll and a second by Commissioner West. Uh, call roll, please.
Uh, Commissioner Gage?
Aye.
Commissioner Staggs?
Aye.
Commissioner West?
Aye.
Commissioner Stoll?
Aye.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Aye.
Chair Schlag and Huffer?
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay. Think, uh, we have, uh, let me find my, my agenda. I am pretty sure we have nothing left but communications. What do we have?
The meeting in, uh, there is no second meeting in December.
Okay.
It will be canceled. Um, we will probably see you on January tenth. Um, I don't know right now what items, if any, we have for that, but we may have something.
Okay.
Can I make a request? Uh, can we get rid of some of the zeros on these? I understand the need to plan for, for future expansion, but 10,000 seems excessive.
I don't think we can do that in our system.
Okay.
Believe me, we, I, I, staff would advocate that as well.
All right.
Um, but you probably, might be able, no, you have to read them?
No, you don't have to read them. That's what, you don't have to read them, so this could have been GLUA twenty-one, twenty-nine.
Oh, perfect. I like it, thank you.
Okay.
But if you really like reading zeros.
No, it'd save us like five minutes of meeting, really.
Okay, does anybody else have anything they wanna bring up?
Oh.
Announce anything?
In, in case I, uh, don't get reappointed, it's been a pleasure, and, uh, I may see you in January.
You know, I wanted to bring that up because there are no guarantees and nobody knows what can possibly happen, so, uh, it's been a pleasure and an honor to be working with everybody here in the last three years. That went really fast. And, uh, I hope I come back next year, so, hope they want me. And, uh, I guess that's it, so, we're adjourned.